Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco Council's special workshop and regular meeting. The council thanks you for being part of our city government. At meetings, the city council takes formal actions on items, holds public hearings, and conducts other business of the city. Following Governor Inslee's recent statewide mask mandate, facial masks are required to be worn at all times while in the council chambers. If any individual is unable to comply with this order, then the meeting will be recessed until compliance is met. If compliance is not met, then the individual refuses to leave the chambers, and the meeting will either recess or reconvene only virtually or to be adjourned. Agenda packets are available on the City of Pasco website at www.pascal-wa.gov/agenda. And please note that the city council meetings may be accessed through GoToWebinar. This meeting is also being televised live on Pasco TV, Channel 191, on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland, and is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, and YouTube channel. This and previous council meeting video is available on the city's website. And lastly, the public may submit their comments and questions by contacting the city manager, city clerk, or using the Pasco app that's available for all citizens in Pasco. And with that, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Alvarado.
Present.
Maloney.
Present.
Milney.
Present.
Roach.
Roach is our, well, is his excuse tonight?
Serrano.
Here.
Mayor Pretem Barajas.
Present.
And Mayor Martinez.
Present. All right, thank you for that. May we all rise for the flag salute, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I thank you for that. And then we'll get right to our special workshop, um, meeting. It's, um, items for discussion tonight is the 2021-22 proposed mid-biennium budget adjustment. So tonight, we have Director Rico or our city manager Dave Zabel, would you like to kick us off with that?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I will kick this off and provide you a bit of an introduction. Uh, it's a pleasure to present to you and the public, uh, recommendation for the proposed mid-biennium budget adjustment. Uh, just so the public's aware, there's a detailed budget message, uh, in the packet materials that's available online. Um, as, as required by, uh, state law, revenues and expenditures in the proposed mid-biennial budget are, remain balanced in all funds, which, uh, has been noted by some of the discussions we've had via email and some of the information I've sent out in the materials, uh, there's been some, there are some considerable adjustments that have been made. Uh, the proposed budget adjustments, uh, staff feels are necessary, uh, to reflect several modifications from the adopted budget. A number of those were approved by council as we've gone through the year by motion. Uh, we brought change orders, excuse me, not change orders, but changes in projects, accelerated projects, uh, because of grants and so forth, and we're, and council, the head council adopted a bi ordinance, uh, or motion, uh, a change in the budget at that time. So this reflects those changes. Uh, changes in conditions, we're able to accelerate some projects or the, or the cost or challenges of a project may have gone up due to, or cost due to challenges, and to take advantage of opportunities. A number of grants, uh, we've received that moved projects, uh, Court Street, one that quickly comes to mind. But consistency with the council goals and the biennial budget, uh, foremost, uh, among the recommendations and in consideration. So, mentioned 2021, and I, I think this is true for pretty much all Americans, but, uh, for this organization, uh, was a pretty amazing year. It, uh, really stretched the capacity of the organization. But I'll, and I'll say that in a, in a normal year to get, uh, to accomplish what's been accomplished, uh, staff has performed extremely well in a year that had the challenges associated with the pandemic, uh, in terms of readiness, accessibility. Our public couldn't even get in the building for a good chunk of the year. Uh, less accountability, uh, or less accessibility of the public to staff and, and staff for the public than is normal, which, uh, added a lot of challenges and, you know, that we're still obviously dealing with. Uh, lack of labor, lack of supply, uh, had its challenges, uh, as well as the corresponding increases in pricing of commodities, uh, construction costs, those kinds of things, and the difficulty of remote meetings, not just for council, but for staff, for ongoing communication, uh, and the public, uh, on detailed issues. I, I would say, my estimation, this organization has performed extremely well over the year, given all those challenges, and able to accomplish quite a bit. Um, the adoption of the biennial budget focuses on, um, implementation of several long, long-range plans and projects, uh, that we're able to accomplish during the year or will accomplish next year. And many of those long-term efforts, such as a comprehensive plan, Broadmoor Area Master Plan in progress, uh, Information Strategic, uh, Service, Information Service Strategic Plan and Transportation System Master Plan were completed in '21. Uh, and then we've kicked off, or are in the, in the, uh, uh, early stages of kicking off, Parks and Rec Comprehensive Plan, uh, Housing Action Plan, Economic Development Plan, and Comprehensive Police Strategic Plan, Fire Master Plan. So there's a number of items that are ongoing and we'll see the fruits and the results of those, uh, going into next year. Some things, um, I think were significant to note, such as the planning, targeted planning efforts for the waterfront zoning district, uh, the phased sign code updates, the comprehensive fire department master plan, uh, that you'll see here in a couple of weeks, or excuse me, a couple, about a month. And then, uh, note, uh, you know, some of the areas where staff has been able to pounce on and, and be nimble and respond to immediate needs. The most recent thing that comes to mind are the zoning changes in the C2 Zone downtown. You know, I, I think, uh, given the workload and the tempo right now and some of the challenges, to be able to turn those things around quickly for council and for council to be able to make those, give, provide those policy directions and, and make it happen, I think, has been, been a good thing for the community. Uh, some things I wanted to talk a little bit about, uh, in terms of the changes that you're seeing reflected in the operations side of the budget at least. And I want to talk a little bit about, uh, CIP, uh, items, probably a little later in the presentation, but, uh, COVID obviously really, uh, impacted expenses and revenues. You know, we, we were, we were a pass-through for a lot of efforts like the, the COVID testing site, uh, in part for a large part of the, um, vaccination site over in, in Benton County, uh, and as well as other vaccination county, excuse me, the vaccination site that was set up in Franklin County, the smaller vaccination site that was co-located with the, with the testing site. The ARPA Business Response, uh, you know, taking, we, we, we have a $9 million revenue coming into the city with ARPA money this year and next, or, yeah, next. This year and next, uh, and so we see that kind of artificially inflate our budget, but it's really pass-through money that we'll be getting out. Uh, and talk a little bit more, we have an ARPA, uh, item on the regular agenda tonight, so we'll talk a little bit more about that. But, uh, the Business Assistant Program, uh, one, about $1.7 million, part of that administration. Uh, the, the, uh, rate payer assistance with, uh, partnership on, with ARPA, uh, between the city and PUD was another little over a million dollars. And, uh, the CARES, uh, program and, and ARPA program for, uh, life safety downtown also going to be, um, a part of, uh, our budget going forward. Some of the other items, uh, from a quality of life standpoint, uh, as I mentioned before, the Parks Recreation Open Space Plan is just kicked off. That will generate a number of projects that you're going to see probably in next spring CIP, you know? We could guess what the scope of those things might be now, but, uh, things like these, uh, comprehensive plan allows us to have a little bit more, uh, nailed-down scope rather than a guess, and some, and some at least planning level estimates as to cost. Uh, as further education efforts, uh, and financial analysis for their, uh, Regional Aquatic Center and ballot measure, that's been a, a major effort on the part of Administrative Community Services this year, and, uh, that project's now readying itself for a ballot, uh, uh, measure to, for the public consideration, uh, early next year. Development of Housing Action Plan, um, Resource Navigator Program in the, in the Fire Department, uh, also partnered with Greater Columbia Accountability, uh, Community Health to obtain a full-time intern, intern position, adding to our Resource Navigator, uh, program. And then a number of, uh, capital projects, a number of the council were out of Chapel Hill Park Project, Peanuts and Farmers Market are coming along, those will be, uh, completed here just in the next several weeks, and three sewer lift station improvement projects. We commenced construction on a very sizable 20-plus million dollar, uh, with expansion at the wastewater treatment plant, that's phase one. Uh, other phases are in your CIP and, and we'll see those in the budget as well. Uh, West Pasco Treatment, Water Treatment, not wastewater, Water Treatment, uh, Phase One Improvements, uh, under design, uh, in the River, River View Area East Lift Station at 52nd and Pearl. That's, that's a project for integrating suburban levels, uh, densities out into the donut hole in proximate to the city. So that's, that's at about 90% design and, and that's, you'll see that in your budget as well. Uh, completion of the Animal Control Shelter, uh, and then, uh, we're initiating a, uh, at this point with, uh, the two projects, MLK Center and the, and the, um, uh, Community Center, uh, in the western part of town, uh, in a location yet to be, uh, determined, uh, do, initiating a public engagement process to advance the, the needs for those and really kind of nail down a scope. Uh, there is some, there is some dollars in your budget, but, uh, in terms of program needs, we, we still need to have that community conversation. Uh, financial sustainability, we've seen a number of initiatives done there, and I, I know, I know this has taken a little bit of time, but it's, it's been a pretty big year. So we've created a visual dashboard for enhanced financial analysis and monitoring that's available to public. Um, a long-term financial plan for the general fund is something we'll be talking to council about early next year. Uh, we've been putting a lot of effort into that for, you know, sustainability and forecasting purposes for policymakers, help you better understand the budget and feel more comfortable with, uh, some of the bigger decisions that happen. Uh, council just last week heard, uh, the results of the completion of the waste, or excuse me, water and sewer rate study. And then, uh, we awarded, um, staff was awarded, uh, as a result of, of their efforts, much, uh, I'll, I'll point out our CIP manager, Maria Sarah, about $45 million in low-interest loans. And that's, that's really had a big impact, or will have a really big impact on what those rates, what the rate structure is going to look like. If, if those loans had not been available, the, the rates that you saw last week, or a couple of weeks ago, would have been much higher. Uh, some, some other things I think of note, uh, we, the city, uh, received the governor, excuse me, Government Financial Officers, uh, Association's Distinguished Budget Award Presentation, and we did that at council, and that's our second, uh, for the, for our second biennial budget and a second award as well. So that's, I think that's a, a pretty big accomplishment, says a lot about, uh, the level of professionalism going into not only this document, but with the, the original biennial budget. And, um, talk a little bit about community safety. Obviously, we opened up two new fire stations this year, and, uh, those things are successfully, uh, in operation now, completed, um, on the transportation side, again, I'd mentioned the Transportation System Master Plan, but along with that, we'll see, uh, traffic impact and analysis related to Broadmoor Master Plan, that's part of our environmental impact statement for the Broadmoor Master Area. That effort generated a lot of projects out in that Broadmoor area. Uh, the, the sewer and then the much sooner-than-expected rapid, uh, development of that LID out there, uh, that came together pretty quick, I think, as a result of the housing market, as a result of, you know, basically running out of inventory. Uh, so there was more than just, uh, Broadmoor properties proper, uh, that, uh, that was in need of that, and that, that helped get that, uh, LID out into that area, which really expedited the need for that, that detailed traffic analysis and pushing forward some of those projects that you also see in the budget. Uh, for instance, the, the Loop Ramp was identified at, um, Interstate 80, I-82 and, and Broadmoor, uh, the Broadmoor-Berns intersection, Broadmoor widening, and much of what's, much of what's going to be accomplished either, uh, by developers or it will be somewhat paid back through transportation impact fees, uh, when and if the city council enacts those, and we're in the process of making that, doing that analysis now. A number of, uh, I think, smaller projects that I think made a difference for the community, not everything has to be $10 million or $20 million. The Wrigley Drive Extension, pretty well-used now, uh, piece of roadway that I think, at least that local neighborhood. And it also gives us a little bit of relief on Road 68, gives folks another alternative than going down to the big intersection. Uh, widening of Road 68 south of 182. Again, that kind of coincides with the Chapel Hill Road extension that we completed, uh, a year or so ago, and has, has helped, uh, access into that area. And, uh, Court Street Overlay, of course, uh, a great maintenance project, I think that's been an enhancement to that area. Uh, and then, uh, Argent Road, uh, Phase One, under construction now, uh, can we commence construction on, construction on Lewis Street Overpass? And that, that's a signature project, legacy project for the, for the city. That is one of the biggest transportation projects, uh, the city has undertaken, uh, by itself, and that, that, that was a lot of work getting that pushed off, and, uh, now we're seeing rebar and concrete and things like that happening out there for at least abutments or going up. Some big, big things, and I know I've talked about the big land use, uh, or excuse me, the, the large, uh, master planning type efforts, but I, 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 I just want to emphasize that, you know, the comp plan, uh, UGA expansion, downtown master plan, Broadmoor master plan, those things really drive what you're, what you see in the CIP and the infrastructure needs for the city, the growth of the city, uh, future employee, employees required of the city to provide, uh, services, the expanded growth. They also pave the way for, for economic vitality and sustainability, and, and, uh, we'll, we'll look at, um, uh, your, your levy rate a little bit later tonight, and the, the levy rate per 1,000 is going down for everybody in town, no matter which, even if you took the, the 1% that the city could take, even if the city council were to decide to do that, the levy rate's still going down because of all the added assessed valuation, uh, that's coming to the city. And, and we, we see, uh, we're seeing only the beginning of the projects like, uh, Amazon Distribution, the two Amazon Distribution Centers. We'll see some, uh, hit on that next year, but the full, uh, assessed valuation of that project, we probably won't see until 2023 or maybe even 2024, just the way that, that delay, you don't, you don't see that assessed valuation increase when you issue the permit, you see it when it's done and the assessor gets out there and then it starts the new tax year. So depending on when that project or the Dairy Gold Plant or Resource Fine Foods, their new plant, Local Bounty, uh, their new plant, depending on when those are completed, that's going to further drive your levy rate down and lower the taxes for basically everybody in the community. We'll have a little bit of a discussion, I know there's some folks that think, or are concerned that if the assessed valuation of your house went up, uh, from $300,000 to $400,000, that means you just got a one-third increase in your taxes. Yeah, that's, that's actually not how it works, and our director will, uh, Sigdel will, uh, explain that a little bit more, uh, later when we talk about assessed valuation. So some projects, uh, that will be, um, catalytic, and, uh, you know, certainly the Columbia East Forest Main, uh, of the process, to the Process Water Reuse Facility, the Process Water Reuse Facility IPS, both projects completed now and, uh, and operational. Uh, the Northwest Area Sewer LID, which I'd already kind of mentioned, uh, those, those are things that'll continue to drive that economic engine that we have out, uh, growing out in that, uh, industrial area. There's a number of other initiatives as well, but I, I kind of want to get down to, to staffing. And so I remind council, and I, I hit on this pretty hard in the budget message last year, and, uh, I reiterated it in the budget message this year, that, uh, the impacts of the pandemic were really unknown to us. We, we didn't know how it was going to impact, uh, many of our revenue sources, sales tax, uh, in particular, uh, and, and some of our other big, uh, items. We didn't know what was going to happen, how the state was going to react, or the feds were going to react in terms of dollars, you know, if they, if that was going to tighten or loosen. So it was really difficult, we're in a difficult point in time last year, and we, we have had some pent-up need, I wouldn't say demand, other than the demands from the public, but pent-up need, uh, based on our, our service levels and maintaining those and enhancing those in some cases, and a growing population, uh, for additional staff. We did not ask for much last year, we would have asked for a lot more. And so this year, you're, we're feeling, you know, we, we got a year's worth of data plus on COVID and what the impact is going to, what anticipated impact's going to be. Uh, we, um, have had that opportunity to, to analyze that, and I, I think we're, have a pretty high level of confidence as to what the next two to three years is going to look like. And, uh, we're, we're going to be, make a presentation a little later, uh, to discuss, uh, additional positions, but, uh, you know, I will note, uh, we're talking 18 additional positions, which is a pretty significant increase. And with that, I, I think, uh, if there's not any real questions on the intro, turn it over to Director Sigdel.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager Dave Zabel. Would you like to reach up?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Zabel. Um, I would highly encourage, uh, the viewers at home and all of our residents, as well as council, to look at Mrs. Zabel's budget message as it goes into a, a really good detail of the status of the city and its finances and the request for this biennial adjustment as well. The agenda packet also includes, um, in, in quite a bit of detail where the requests are coming from, uh, in total, uh, with full recognition that this is an, a higher-than-average, uh, request for a mid-biennial, uh, adjustment, uh, but we were pretty conservative, uh, when we were first setting the biennial budget, and that is, that is the impact that you're Next slide, please.
So let me, if I could, I'll, I'll cover the summary. So, the impact of the new employees that I discussed, uh, salaries, benefits, you know, equipment, those kinds of things, is about $2.5 million, and I just want to kind of walk through some of the increase that you're seeing. CPI adjustments for, uh, the city's current, uh, 380, 85 or so employees is about $1.3 million. Uh, Rich is going to talk a little bit about this double accounting thing, but, uh, you can kind of see him bracketed there next to it. So he has land purchases of about $15 million, and part of that $15 million is $12 million from one fund to another fund, and then it gets, the, it, the land would actually be purchased out of Fund 194, in this case, the Economic Development Fund. But in our budget, it looks like a double count. It looks like more like, it looks like it bumps the budget up 30 million, excuse me, 24 million, because you have 12 billion in one place, and then that's transferred over, and then you get an expenditure of 12 million in another place. So it gives you this artificial bump that, uh, so when you're looking at just gross numbers on the bottom line, you, you kind of need to understand that piece. The same is true with the capital projects. You're seeing $15 million for capital projects increase, but 9 million of it is duplicated in the budget, so it looks more like 24 million instead of 15 million. Uh, and then we have some professional services, supplies and cost allocation of about 6.3, we can get into details on that, but those are, the cost allocation is for general funds, uh, services to other, uh, utilities. And then, uh, obviously, the professional services, we're dealing with, uh, a huge influx on, uh, uh, growth development right now, and, uh, we, we, we need some help. Don't know that it's the best thing to staff up to the level to cover everything, don't even know if that kind of staff would even exist out there. You know, to go hire, you know, five building inspectors or four plans examiners, might, might take you all year, and you'd be lucky to get half of them, you know? So we, we need the consultant, uh, support in those places. Uh, one, assuming we're at a peak, and two, just, just being able to have that kind of resource and, and get, get those plans and inspections and so forth out the door. So there's a considerable amount there, I think, just on the, on the planning side, or excuse me, planning and building side, it's about $650,000. Now, the good news is that, is that, uh, the permit fees for those, um, and, and service fees for those services pretty much are, are paid by the, by the applicant. They're not paid necessarily by the taxpayers, except as it comes in the budget and goes out of the budget. So it's essentially a pass-through. So those, those are kind of the highlights of some of the big numbers in the budget. Uh, the new position request, next slide, please. Uh, so I, I'll just walk through them real, really quickly. So, uh, in administrative, uh, services, uh, we have a groundsman, two. And that, that position is requested, uh, to provide some, uh, work in our new park zone, it's basically, it's exclusively to focus on the downtown core of Pasco. So we, we kind of, we, we maintain our parks in, in a number of different zones, we want to have a smaller zone of, you know, pretty high-intensity focus, uh, in the downtown. So that, that'd be a full-time position, uh, dedicated towards that, that would obviously be supported at other times in the year with, with a crew, uh, when needed, or, or seasonals and so forth. In community and economic development, uh, actually asking for three there, you know, I wanted a little bit of discussion about what we might need in the way of consultant support, but, uh, we do need to add some staff there, so the proposal is, uh, permit coordinator, an additional building inspector, and additional, uh, planner one, to, to help, uh, process, uh, the development, uh, that we have coming our way, and it seems to be pretty sustainable. And the executive department, uh, this is something council's already approved, and it's part of your ARPA plan, was a position, uh, and it's been filled, a position funded by ARPA, and essentially is like our resource navigator for community members, uh, and the city and city staff, for whatever other programs there might be out, out there for assistance, uh, trying to connect individuals with programs suited to their, that are, that are geared towards their individual needs or, or interests or situations. So, um, as I said, that's already, that's already underway, but it's not, it was not put into the budget, so this, except by a motion when we talked about it earlier, but this, this adds to that budget. Finance, payroll specialist, uh, obviously a workforce, uh, approaching 400, even, even at 380 now, it's a lot for one person to, to try to do that on a regular basis, uh, and, uh, there's not really an opportunity. Let's just say every, 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 it's, it's very, very limiting to ask an employee, you can only be gone here and here and here. I mean, it, it really put, and so, we're kind of expanding, uh, the role of payroll, uh, to take into account some other things, uh, performing some analysis that we're not doing now, and, uh, reporting and trends, uh, and then back up to the, to the payroll specialist. But both, both will be trained, uh, to do payroll, obviously, and, uh, that's, I think that's going to provide us a lot of stability and flexibility in that department. And a department assistant, too, uh, in our Utility and Customer Service Division, uh, people have rediscovered City Hall, and they're coming back, and, uh, it, it's a, it's a needed position. In fire, um, uh, there's, there's some succession planning pieces, uh, so the proposal there, we're, we're hiring five personnel to backfill the employees, uh, that are, have left or will be, um... are have left or will be soon to be leaving the governor, the department because of the mandate regarding COVID vaccinations we've had. I think we're at three now?
Yeah, we'll have three then.
Yeah. So we need to maintain, you know, trying to maintain that 81 permanent employees to make sure that all of our stations are and shifts are covered. Right now, you know, because of some other FMLA-type leaves and so forth, we're actually hiring overtime just to maintain all shifts at all of our at our stations right now. And so we need to kind of keep that temporary number up for now as we kind of get through this time of uncertainty. And then a develop, excuse me, Department One Assistant, that that's necessary as well, provide some assistance, admin assistance for the department. In police, a little bit of interesting story. So part of this request, captain and a sergeant, is out of, in part, response to what we've seen from a legislature in terms of police reform, and also just from a growth of the organization standpoint. And that's the we're going to stand up, proposing to stand up a professional standards division led by the captain. And it's something that a lot of larger departments have, and we're getting to that point where it makes sense for us to have. And I actually, my first conversation here about a professional standards division was with Chief Metzger. And so it's an idea that's been kind of rumbling around for a few years now. And with the changes last year and some of the accountability issues, not necessarily with our staff, but our our ability to document it, our ability to analyze, our ability to train and make sure people are getting the right kind of training, making sure we're following up on on issues that we need to follow up on to be either compliant or ahead of the game when it comes to to standards set by CJTC or the legislature, we feel this division is necessary. And so that's the captain and the sergeant. And then the two patrol officers, these, you know, we obviously, council, we've had a had a number of, excuse me, a continued growth of the city, just trying to keep our officer count up up to the city. Right now, we're approaching just a little over one commissioned officer per 1,000. West Coast average is probably about 1.7?
Just under two.
Yeah, about, yeah, just under two. And I think Washington State's probably somewhere between 1.3, 1.5. So we're a little little bit behind the eight ball. On the other hand, we're we're in the process of a of a police master plan, and so we're we're trying to minimize the amount of positions we're asking for now. I think that police master plan, which also identified the professional services division, by the way, or professional standards division, I think that police master plan is going to have some detailed recommendations for the city council to consider when we bring that to you next year. So but but we do need some just to just to assist us now. And, you know, I I don't want to sound like I'm whining or anything, but there's a lot of leaves available today. You know, there's there's a lot of paid time off available, the FMLA and the new state sick leave, paid sick leave program and things like that, and people are taking advantage of those. And we have it's harder to cover a shift now with an FTE than it ever has been, just because of all the available benefits out there that have been mandated onto local government. So that's had an impact on this department as well as other departments. So Public Works, five positions there, capital improvement project inspector. Council certainly noted, and I've gotten some feedback from a couple of you at least on our CIP plan and and how it's really taken off. And I talked a little bit about some of the projects that are getting done, but we need to beef up our staff inspection from an inspection standpoint, from an engineering standpoint, if we're going to deliver on that, as well as from a project management standpoint. And so you see those three positions in basically CIP engineering to support our project load. And then operationally, the request is for two heavy equipment operators. Again, if our population's increasing, so are our miles of water and sewer lines and roads and things like that. So that's the basis of that. And those kind of, I think those hit the highlights of and provide a pretty decent explanation of the new position request. And with that, I think we're back to Reach's slides.
Thank you, Mr. Zabel. As I've always mentioned, sometimes the accounting for local government can seem a little bit confusing, so we thought that maybe an introduction to the type of accounting that we do might be a good approach to start this budget presentation with that. Next slide, please. One of the so what we do is something called a fund accounting, and that is what most local governments, as well as nonprofits, do as well. And you are you're looking at five high-level common city fund types. General fund, that is the most usual, something that you're most familiar with, special revenue funds, general construction fund, debt service, and proprietary fund. I will go into a little bit more detail here, harder to read, but what general fund does is essentially general government. Whatever your general government functions are, that is what the general fund, where those functions lie within the general fund. So that is why you see parks and recreation, your police, your fire within that. Special revenue funds are a little bit outside of that. It might not be considered to be general government, but whatever revenue that you're getting is restricted for a certain use. And that is why you see our fire department as a whole, that is both provides fire and ambulance services. You have general fund through which fire suppression is funded, but you also have an ambulance fund. And the reason for that is that we charge people an ambulance fee and a transport fee for the utilization of that service. So you cannot take that money in, those fees and those transport fees come in, put it into general fund, and let's say, pay the parks and recreation department. So we have the special revenue funds, whose revenues are restricted for a specific use. Then you have a general construction fund, which is essentially a unique thing towards government purposes, in that general fund and special revenue funds are not allowed to construct anything. So it's kind of an accounting thing. So we they transfer money to the construction fund so that we can build roads and fire stations, police stations, things like that. Debt service funds are pretty self-explanatory, where we manage our debt obligations for our governmental purposes. And then you have enterprise funds, and think about enterprise funds as almost separate from the first four. And enterprise funds are your utility funds mostly. And what they are are considered to be a very separate type of business. They have their own accounting standards, and essentially, our water and sewer services fall within that. General fund can give money to any of these funds for whatever reason. However, when you are reversing that, you really have to, let's say that there's scenarios where the enterprise fund is giving money to general fund, you really have to have your ducks in a row to justify why that is necessary. Case in point, our cost allocation that we just talked about. And we have a whole cost allocation model. We have to update that every three years. And it's essentially a model that looks at what are the services that the general fund is providing to all of these other funds, including the enterprise fund? And so what does water and sewer fund owe to the general fund? So before we transfer, we really have to justify it with those kinds of analysis. General fund can give money to any fund without any question. It's just the question would be its ability to do so. Any questions so far? Next slide, please. So some of the examples of where there's a lot of transfers that happen between these funds, cost allocation we talked about. There's also an equipment replacement and operations. So it's essentially like, you know, you're going to a business, and you're saying, I need an oil change. Our equipment replacement fund, we have a shop, we all of the expenses of that shop goes into this fund, and then the revenue that they get is what is charged to other funds for shop rates. And so you will see some expenses activity because you're transferring your police department that is going in for a lot of oil changes, is getting charged that money, it's coming in as a revenue for the equipment replacement fund. And then the expenses are essentially the expenses of the fund to actually provide that service. The best way to kind of think about all of these things is that we're running a city, but we're running a city with a lot of mini businesses. And so they they still need to have their own books, and we need to have a clear line of what how we charge something, how, when are we transferring funds, what are the backups that we have? And of course, council has to not only give us authorization for just the general fund, but for every fund, for every expense and revenue. And so that is where you get into this territory of when we say, you know, the $12 million of the land purchase will show up twice when you look at the total ask. And the reason for that is because we're asking that we transfer that fund, that $12 million, to Economic Development Fund. And then we purchase the land in the Economic Development Fund for various reasons. And so you see an expensive transfer from general fund to Economic Development Fund, so that's one expense. And then when you buy the land in equipment replace, or sorry, Economic Development Fund, then that's another expense. So that's two expenses. The same happens to revenues as well at times. Have I muddied the waters or made it just a little bit clear?
There you learn.
Next slide, please. So I'm hearing a lot of chattering over here because they've heard this so much, so many times. So overall, it is a little bit confusing at times, and there are different rules, but we are a full-service city, and with that comes a lot of complications as well. If we did not have utilities, finance department would be much smaller, and some of these transactions would be much simpler. But we do, and we provide kind of a one-stop service for our residents, and there's a lot of value in that. So with that, if you do not have any questions on this, I would like to move forward on on more of the details of the presentation. Next slide, please. So with general fund, we are asking for an increase in revenue for $12.6 million, increase in expense for $19.8 million. And there is a full detail that goes into what kind of revenues these are, like, for example, taxes is the major increase, mostly your sales tax, gaming taxes, utility taxes that have increased more than we had anticipated when we were setting the budget. And similarly, with the expenses, a large part of our expenses is the labor adjustment and the new proposed FTEs. So you're looking at $2.8 million for just labor-related expenses and $15 million in land purchase overall. We also have additional costs in this that are related to vehicle leases or purchases, also IT costs and professional services for the permitting permitting activity that we just talked about. And we have included a full scope of what it takes to hire a payroll specialist, which is, you know, IT costs and and their salary versus a police officer where we are including a vehicle for them and all of the other equipments that they would need to be provided with. So this budget includes all aspects of what it takes to add an FTE for the city. Next slide, please. Some of the transportation-related funds, and these are special revenue funds, like the street fund that manages and maintains the city streets, arterial street fund that usually acts as like a matching fund for doing projects on our arterial, as well as impact fee and overlay. So overall, you're seeing some of the increases in these in this fund, some CPI adjustments for staff in the street fund, but mostly new projects. And within that new project, the Broadmoor Intersection Improvement, which is the largest one. The proposed revenue that you see as an increase is through our electronic cameras, and council had authorized transfer of those funds for transportation safety-related projects. So this is the first time we're transferring it for its operation in the last two years. Next slide, please.
Director Siegel?
Yes.
This is Council member, ladies, real quick, back on that previous slide. Are the revenues from the traffic enforcement cameras, the red light cameras, are those going to a specific project, or is it just going overall to help defray some of the costs?
So far, at this time, we have just, we're just requesting that we move it from general fund. And at a later point, very likely in the next year CIP, we would come to council with some of the safety projects. But at this point, it's just a transfer.
Okay, thank you.
Ambulance Services Fund, we did, we redid our cost allocation model, and with that, there was a few changes for for some funds, and there was an increase in cost allocation for the ambulance services fund, as well as increases in vehicle maintenance. And then, of course, the CPI adjustments and the proposed new FTEs. Next slide, please. Our REIT fund, or Capital Improvement Fund, as it's also called, these are, this is a fund where we collect all of our real estate excise taxes. So whenever there's sales of homes happening, we get a certain percentage of of that, there's a certain rate that we receive, and we collect those those receipts, and we can only fund them for capital projects. And there's certain restrictions to that as well. Again, your special revenue fund. And you'll see an increase in expenses, again, for the Broadmoor Intersection, Slagle Boating Facility, City Hall remodel. And you will see a lot of connections between the CIP projects and this Capital Improvement Fund, because we do utilize quite a bit of this fund reserves to fund our capital projects. Economic Development Fund, we already talked about this, but this is the 12 million that we speak of, and as you can see, there's a revenue here of 12 million. And if you were really putting your city hat on, that's not really a revenue, because, you know, it's just coming from the general fund. But for this fund, it is. And then the expense when we actually purchase that land. Additionally, we're also in need for some funds to finish off the balance of the Columbia East Force Main Project, as well as to fund the embankment repair activity till we receive some more communication from our insurer. And if we do receive any reimbursement from the from the insurer, we would be replenishing this fund, and there'll be some reserves left. Utility Fund, overall, not a huge increase in revenue and some increases in the expenses. For this fund, the water sewer rate study has really revised our project schedules, and we have also not included any increases to the revenue that might come from the rate increases, because we are waiting for council's direction. So depending on what discussions we we have here, this this might increase next week or the week after. And we have added new projects, and and they're basically followed with our water sewer rate study, or what is in our water sewer rate study. We also spoke on the Equipment Rental Operations Fund, and this is, again, this is where all of our vehicles, the city vehicles, are repaired, and we're seeing some increased cost for external maintenance contract, as well as a purchase of a new hoist, which is a new equipment. And Equipment Rental Replacement Fund is where we purchase new vehicles. And again, And again, these are vehicles, these are expenses for the vehicles that will be purchased, but the revenue is from the other funds where we are requesting for new FTEs. And so if those new FTEs require a new vehicle, then they would transfer that money to the Equipment Rental Replacement Fund and then this fund would purchase those. Local Improvement District, this is just a cleanup effort on our part. We've had a few older LIDs that we've had early payoffs on. And so what we're requesting here is essentially moving any excess funds from this early payoffs to LID Guarantee Fund. And what it essentially does in the LID Guarantee Fund is whenever you issue an LID, you're required to have ten percent of that LID in a guarantee fund. And so this will allow us to be a little bit more flexible depending on what kinds of LIDs we will be issuing on future to make sure that we're not, that we can properly fund that ten percent and we don't have to stretch ourselves too much at that time. So this gives us a little bit of a wiggle room. Mr. Zabel, would you like to?
Yes, thank you. So council, there's, I think, four major policy things to consider in this budget. One is the property tax increase for the future. Both the inclusion of new growth, that actually is a considerable amount in the community that'll drive your property tax levy rate down and add revenue to the city coffers. And then the banking of the one percent. So that's going to be a separate item. We do add billarm, but that's a policy consideration and that's what this budget's built on, is that assumption. Water and Sewer Service Rate Increase, we talked a little bit about that, or actually quite a bit about that recently. And then something we talked about with ARPA last week is the capital project debt support. And we're going to, we'll hit that when we talk about the ARPA project. But that's essentially the nine million alternative using ARPA money to drive the potential rate increase for ratepayers down in the water utility. And the new position requests, went over those already in detail, but that's a council policy issue, certainly. And then the new capital projects or the revisions to capital projects that are requested. So with that, that concludes our formal presentation. And certainly if council wants to get into questions, we're obviously not asking for action this evening. But we do have a deadline, our last, least scheduled meeting at this point is intended to be the first meeting in December. And so we have next week to talk a little bit more about budget and I would encourage council, please ask whatever questions you have tonight, but if you have questions during the week that come up, contact Director Sigdahl or myself. We'll do our best to get back to you on those to try to keep us on a schedule that give you a little bit lighter December.
Appreciate that. City Manager Dave Zabel and Director Riecha. Always feel comfortable going and asking the questions. I will open it up to any questions or comments if anybody has any tonight. I know this has been an extensive presentation and the city is very, very busy, as you can see. And it sometimes does get complicated, but it just comes with the program. So I'll just open it up to any questions or comments from council, or should we just move on?
This is Councilmember Maloney. I'll be brief.
Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor Martinez. Thank you, Director Sigdahl and City Manager Zabel for this presentation. I spent a significant amount of my weekend, most of my weekend reviewing this, the ARPA list, the CIP and such. And, you know, I want to say that the budget is really well put together and I think well defended and we're very defensible. I'll be honest, I had less questions about the budget than I did some of the other items. And I think that goes strongly to how well thought through these adjustments are. So I just want to applaud staff for their hard work on this and just let you know that it is recognized how much goes into this and how important it is to display in the way we have. And I think one of the things that City Manager Zabel said at the opening was how challenging of a year it has been for a ton of different reasons and yet how much has been accomplished by staff. And I just think, again, kudos to staff for all the hard work they've made and the successes they've had this year that really make us as a city, you know, a fantastic place to live. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney. And I will echo those remarks as well. You know, in addition to what we normally do with the last, you know, with this event in this last two years and to be able to just keep up with everything, it is amazing. Sure appreciate all the work that's done to it. And to expect, you know, it's at a point where the seams are breaking, we need more. And we want to keep those seams intact. And so appreciate the work that went into it.
Thank you.
All right, if there's nothing more, then we'll continue or move on to the next item. And the next item, Director Riecha, you want to go ahead and get us going with the update to the Capital Improvement Plan?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the Capital Improvement Plan that staff presented last week quite extensively. And there was a request from council to look at prior year's submission as well as the current year's submission and provide some analysis and comments on the differences. And staff has done that, so at this point, we are open to any questions on the analysis that was provided to council this week.
Okay. I'll go ahead and open it up to council, if they have any questions or comments.
This is Councilmember Maloney. I think that's in response to the question I asked. Is that correct, Director Sigdahl?
That is correct.
Thank you. Great. Just want to make sure I'm well calibrated, not speaking out of turn. The analysis staff provided didn't quite answer my question. I know we have some long-term items that are very much addressed by the master planning efforts that we've gone through and we knew that that was going to expose some additional projects that were just necessary for continued improvement of the city and just maintenance of the city. But I guess where my concern remains is that in just fiscal year, or in fiscal year twenty-two, we're increasing the projects by over forty million dollars net once you, you know, once you remove the PWRF items from the list there, the reductions from that. So that's a lot. And I know some of them were accelerations because of, you know, industrial projects and other things that were, you know, that maybe caught us by surprise in a good way this year. And I know some of them were products that lingered from, you know, previous years that need to either be reintroduced or moved forward out of necessity given especially COVID impacts for that. But I also noted a number of new projects and I'm still, I guess I'm still unclear on which ones are new and why they're new, because some of these things like, for example, the upgrades to the Broadmoor and I-182 interchange, that seems to be a new project that was not on our CIP before. However, I know that four years ago, every single council member was talking about how important it was to make sure that Broadmoor and 182, you know, didn't have some of the struggles that we had on Road 68 and Burton and that interchange there. So I guess I'm still trying to understand that and I'm hoping staff can lend some clarity so we can make sure that we understand that this plan, this capital improvement is forward-looking, it is strategic, and it's anticipating the needs that are coming. So we're not playing catch-up in the way that we have historically done so. That creates, you know, major safety issues and major concerns for our community. So could staff respond to that or is that, I guess, how would you best like to respond to that question?
Yeah, I think if I could, mayor and council, probably best just to talk about projects that we have questions on. And I can certainly start by addressing and I'd ask either Director White or Director Worley, if they feel I've left something out to jump in and we'll just kind of tag-team along and try to address some of the project or questions that may come up on the project. So I think with Interstate 182 and Broadmoor, I think all of us have recognized that once growth starts taking off out there, something has to be done. And within the last couple of years, one, I will add, that project was added to your TIP just recently. So your adoption last June was the first time that those improvements for the interchange were included in your six-year transportation, annual six-year transportation improvement plan update. So one, we wanted to reflect that in the CIP, obviously. But two, a lot of analysis has gone on in the last year and a half out there. And while we might have instinctively known something needs to happen two years ago, year and a half ago even, the concern was backup on the ramp. And the conventional wisdom at the time was the lack of a free right in only one southbound lane. And if we were to get that other lane installed on Broadmoor south of 182, that's going to take care of the backup issue. And so that was, and then we've had some pending, impending development that actually is going to come to fruition on that corner now, but we had a couple of false alarms over the year. And we're trying to program maybe some, not necessarily go out there and spend much dollars on public improvements that the developer is going to put in the next year or have to put in the next year. So there was some discussion on that, but I don't think, we did not have the kind of information to say that loop ramp was a potential solution. And even now, we, while we have some modeling and we have some, a pretty good engineering analysis that supports that, we still have to go through a federal process because it's an interstate highway interchange. And we started that ramp revision process with Department of Transportation. We're getting great cooperation out of them. Steve Worley is leading that effort with his group. And that project's going to come to fruition, maybe not as fast as some would like, but it's going to come to fruition pretty quickly. So we're moving forward pretty rapidly on it. But we did not have that solution identified. And even now, it is not something that we have approval from Washington State Department of Transportation and Federal Highway Administration for. We're going to have to look at other alternatives than that. We're pretty confident, I think, and Steve can render his opinion on this too, but I think we're pretty confident that is going to be the best solution in the eyes of the regulatory agencies we're working with on this. But I think when we first started talking about this project, and I didn't look to see what's in the six-year TIP, but we're at probably six-ish million dollars now. And just five or six months ago, we were thinking four million in the initial analysis of the project and the consultant's estimates. As we've gotten further in and looked at more information and what needs to be done and, you know, there needs to be some widening on the westbound ramp as well. You know, I'm kind of thankful that we didn't low-ball it and put something in last year on a guess. And, I mean, it is a placeholder, but, you know, we get criticized and we put a low number in and it jumps in a year because we go from a guess to a planning estimate to an engineered estimate to a, to a, an actual bid. Those things can really fluctuate. And so it would have been great to have it in last year, it would have been. But I don't think we had the level of analysis to really back up putting it in as any more than just a guess last year. And that's not our facility. That's a state Department of Transportation facility as well. The only reason it's even in our CIP is because we're having to totally fund it. And that's something we didn't know a year ago or two years ago necessarily either, that DOT was not going to be any help. I think we learned last legislative session that we can probably expect that on just about anything. We learned that with SR-12, about the only thing they're willing to do is restrict movements and put some signs up and some striping on the roadway. Other than that, their challenge is just to do maintenance. So that's probably a longer-winded explanation for that particular project than you need. And I promise we won't give that kind of an explanation for some of the other projects that might have questions on or we'll be here all night. So I don't know, Steve, you wanted to add to that?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that City Manager Zabel hit the nail on the head relative to the amount of information that we have now compared to what we had even just last year. With all of the work that was done for the Transportation System Master Plan, which looked at traffic volumes and developments throughout the entire city, the information we have based on the comprehensive plan and the analysis that went along with that as well, plus the Broadmoor Corridor itself evaluation, we now have more information that allowed us to be able to identify more projects within the six-year Transportation Improvement Program than what we've had in the past. And that rolled over into the CIP program as well. So while I think a lot of us knew that something needed to be done, we didn't know the details of what that would be. And this analysis that's been done over the last year and a half or two years really, really helped nail those projects down for us. And that's why you're seeing a lot more detailed information in this year's CIP, so.
So this is Councilmember Maloney. Just real quick, I guess, so again, my job is risk management for projects and large-scale government operations, so I absolutely understand the uncertainties that can exist in these. But one thing I've found is that in general, the answer of not in there at all and then now it's a seven million dollar ask in the immediate year is a lot harder to swallow than a number that is, has a lot of uncertainty to it. And so I guess I'm just surprised that over the course of the next six years, you know, thinking about last year, that over the course of the following six years, that we didn't think that there's going to be any money needed to be invested in this, even at a planning estimate at all. So I guess from my perspective, my request would be that we be more liberal in what we include in the CIP, understand that we can remove items and look very good than adding a lot of items into something like this based on just not having the exact details. A four million dollar estimate and explaining to why we jumped to seven million would be a lot easier conversation, I think, and a lot more responsive to the community needs than a zero, project isn't even in existence and now a seven million in the current year that we're looking at approving. Gives us a very short window to discuss and make sure that we understand how we're going to fund these and what the impact is to the taxpayers. So I guess that's my overall statement and concern about this, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney. It's really difficult to have the crystal ball, right? But we do what we can. Any other questions or comments from council? All right. Well, thank you, Director Riecha.
And we will bring this back to council for a resolution approval on the December 6th or the 22nd.
Okay, thank you very much. So with that, that's the two items that we had for our special workshop. And so I'm going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting and move on to our regular meeting. And with all the housekeeping out of the way, I will move right on to item number four of our regular meeting. And item number four consists of the Consent Agenda. All items listed under the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by roll call vote as one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If further discussion is desired by council members or the public, the item may be removed from the Consent Agenda to the regular agenda and considered separately. With that, first item on the Consent Agenda is the Approval of Meeting Minutes. To approve the minutes of the past city council meeting held on November 1st, 2021 and workshop held on November 8, 2021. We have bills and communications to approve claims in a total amount of four million dollars, one hundred sixty-eight thousand, four hundred and nine dollars and fifty-three cents. I'm sorry, I said that wrong.
Yeah, I know.
So it's four million, one hundred sixty-eight thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine dollars and fifty-three cents. There you go.
Sorry, Matt.
So, and that's to approve bad debt write-off for utility billing, ambulance, utility billing, ambulance, cemetery, general accounts, miscellaneous counts, and municipal court accounts receivable in the total amount of ninety-five thousand, seventy-one dollars and eighty-eight cents. And of that amount authorized zero to be turned over for collection. Item C of the Consent Agenda is an ordinance amending the PMC Chapter 10 dot 70, Parking Streets Restricted, to adopt ordinance number 4557, amending Section 10 dot 70 dot 080, Schedule 3, Parking Prohibited at All Times on Certain Streets, and Section parking prohibited at all times on certain streets and section ten dot seventy dot zero, nine, zero, schedule four, parking prohibited during certain hours on certain streets of the municipal, of Pasco Municipal Code. Item D is the resolution for the two thousand twenty-two legislative priorities to approve resolution number four, one, one, five, declaring the city's legislative priorities for the two thousand twenty-two session of the Washington State Legislature. Item E is a resolution setting public hearing for vacating a portion of East Pueblo Street. And that's to approve resolution number four, one, one, six, setting the time and date to conduct a public hearing to consider vacating a portion of East Pueblo Street. Item F is a an amendment to the Mid-Columbia Library Agreement to approve resolution number four, one, one, seven, amending the interlocal cooperation agreement between City of Pasco and the Mid-Columbia Libraries and authorize the city manager to execute the amendment. Item G is uh an amendment number four to professional services agreement for the West Pasco Water Treatment Plant Improvements Phase One with R H two Engineering. And that's to approve resolution number four, one, one, eight, authorize an execution of the amendment number four for the professional services agreement with R H two Engineering, Inc. for the West Pasco Water Treatment Plant Improvements Phase One. Item H is a professional services supplemental agreement number four with J U B Engineers, Inc. for Lewis Street Overpass Project. And that's to approve resolution number four, one, one, nine, authorizing the city manager to execute supplement number four for the professional services agreement with J U B Engineers, Inc. for the Lewis Street Overpass Project. So with that, I will pause for a moment to see if anyone has any questions or comments and wants to move an item from the consent agenda. Seeing none. Mayor Proten.
I move to appro- approve consent agenda as read.
So there's been a motion to approve the consent agenda as read. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Serrano. May we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Councilmember Milney.
Yes.
Serrano. Alvarado.
Yes.
Maloney.
Yes.
Mayor Proten Barajas.
Yes.
And Mayor Martinez.
Yes, so it passes unanimously. Thank you. Next, we go to proclamation, proclamations and acknowledgements, and there's none listed. And next, we have a section here for uh that's common for many of many people. This, we have a visitors other than agenda items. So this item is provided to allow citizens the opportunity to bring items to the attention of the city council or to express an opinion on an issue. Its purpose is not to provide a venue for debate or for the posing of questions with the expectation of an immediate response. Some questions require consideration by council over time, and after a deliberative process with input from a number of different sources, some questions are best directed to staff members who have access to specific information. Citizens' comments will normally be limited to three minutes uh each by the mayor, and those with lengthy messages are invited to summarize their comments and or submit uh written information for consideration by the council outside of formal meetings. So with that, uh I see a gentleman we haven't seen here in a while. How's he doing?
I sure have missed all seven of you, that's for darn sure. Mister Mayor, I do pray for your indulgence. Um I'm here for two reasons. First is the chair of your IDEC Commission, so it's not a citizen comment, but it is one that needs to be made on behalf of IDEC. The second is a citizen comment, both positive. So uh please, I pray your indulgence. The first thing I bring to your attention as a council is as your IDEC Commissioner and pretty darn proud to be your IDEC uh chair. Um and that is, I would like to formally invite the seven members of the Pasco City Council and our amazing staff to an event that your commission will be holding on December first at five thirty P M. Now, as we all know, before this lovely pandemic and the governor's very creative executive orders were put in place, we were holding in-person um town halls to better communicate with the citizens of Pasco and better accomplish the mission that you have charged us with. It's taken us a while to adjust to these new regulations, and we have definitely been working very hard, as you yourselves have commented, on getting you a plan and appearing before you to present on subjects that you decide we need to present on. This is a continuation of our work. I would also note that this will probably be one of the last times I get an opportunity to speak to you as your IDEC Chair, because as I understand it, our terms are up in December and I won't be renewing. So this will be our last ride together. That is the extent of the IDEC commentary. If you, Mister Mayor, want to ask me a question, I don't know how that works when it's an official business item.
No, that's, that's.
Can I miss the location?
It's going to be held over Zoom, Councilman Serrano. Bring your popcorn and get your your I T guy ready.
Thank, thank you. Uh no, we can go on and go on to the next item, please.
Uh thank you. This one, I say as a private citizen, I'm going to miss you, Mister Mayor. And I just wanted to say, as a private citizen, and I'm going to try really hard not to get emotional here, you have been a pretty darn good official. You have helped to guide us through one of the hardest things we as a city have ever had to do. And I understand that we are not supposed to address individual council members, but just this once, someone has to say it to your face. You lived up to the responsibility of your office, and you did so with distinction. You honored every legacy that came before you, and you've set an impressive standard for those after. You've taken more crap in a lot of ways, especially from people like me than other mayors have. And I just could not resist the opportunity at one of your last meetings to look you in the eye, look you in the face and say, not only have you lived up to your own values and done so with distinction, you turned people like me who didn't necessarily know what to make of your conviction into people who believe in you on a personal level. You make me pretty damn proud to be a Pascoan, and you've done a wonderful job. And I just want to say thank you, and I'm going to miss.
Your three minutes are up.
Yep, I'm done.
Uh but before you leave, I I thank you so much as a citizen like you that keep us moving and and make, you know, the city of Pasco what it is. And uh you know, I'd like the rest of our council members, our our passion is to bring the community together and just see what we can do to help the people. Our passion is to help people. And thank you so much for your participation and your willingness to help the community. I wish more people would step up to the plate. Uh and there is a lot of people who have, but thank you so much for your comments, and I appreciate it.
God bless you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh next, yes, sir. Want to go ahead and come on up?
Good evening, everybody. Um I don't know how this works, first time coming here. Um I guess commentary is a private citizen, downtown Pasco business owner and lifelong citizen of Pasco. So um some things have been getting hot in downtown Pasco recently, and I'm coming here to vouch for several of the business owners who have been affected by raising crime and things that are happening. Um I don't know exactly how this is going to work, but I do know that it's going to take a collaboration of us as committee members, business owners, uh working with Pasco Police Department and anybody else that's willing to step up, um and see what we can do about this. In the last three weeks, maybe maybe longer than that, there's been several crimes, most of them nonviolent, except for one that I recently found out about. I had no idea this happened earlier in October. Um one of our businesses down here on First Avenue and Lewis Street held up at gunpoint, robbing in broad daylight. And then um a business owner next door to us had their audio shop broken into. This was just two weeks ago. Four days after that, um another business had a fire lit behind it. Second time there's a fire lit near this building this time, it extinguished itself. Um and then um another day later, some business owners that are here had their uh business broken into, a taco truck broken into. All the security equipment was stolen, as well as other business items from them. And then um another set of business owners that are here also tonight had several of their customers' cars broken into, so they no longer can have customers storing their cars there. And then um another business owner had their vehicle broken into and several business items stolen. And all this is just within the last two to three weeks. And these are just things that I know about. I don't know how much there is that is going on that I don't know about, but these are just people that I know personally. Um what we're looking for or asking of is possibly working on getting better lighting so that people that are coming into the area because of the homeless traffic. Um I don't have any hard science on this, but police officers who said there are people that are homeless being shipped in from other cities like Portland and Seattle to our city because we have a great place for the homeless to go to, Tri-City Union Gospel Mission. And um another thing that I'm looking for myself, because I have a business right here, I have a gym, a martial arts dojo, yoga studio, martial art uh and a massage studio right here in between First Avenue and Second Avenue, and I have a lot of women and kids that come during the dark hours in the morning, five A M., and then the last clients leaving at eight o'clock at night. So we're looking for more patrol, better lighting, and I don't know, maybe some of the investments that are being used to make other sides of Pasco nicer, like the west side. We appreciate what you're doing over here with the overpass. That's going to be bringing a lot of, you know, beauty to the area. Um but we're looking for for a little bit more if there can be anything done, maybe security cameras, something that will deflect or make people that are looking to cause trouble or take care of themselves, not because they want to, but because they're desperate. You know, this whole COVID thing and everything else has made it more difficult for a lot of people, a lot of families. And I myself have had my business in downtown Pasco for nine, nine and a half years. I haven't gone to West Pasco or Richland because that's where there's more affluent people that go for businesses like mine. But I have a heart for downtown Pasco. I want to be a light for people to come here. I want to take care of their health, mental, physical, and emotional. And to keep these kind of businesses around here, we got to make it safe. So the people that are from other cities stop looking at Pasco, or downtown Pasco is the armpit of the Tri-Cities, because it is not that. We are a place that has the potential to be a mecca for arts, culture, food, and community. And there's a potential there, and a lot of people I think would come if we had a little bit more safety and we didn't, and we weren't looked at in such a manner. So I don't know what it's going to take, but I would like to offer the business owners that I'm here with and others to come together and work with Pasco Police Department, the Fire Department, and anybody else ready to step up and do something to make the place feel safer and bring unity amongst our community.
Yeah, sure. Well, I didn't catch your name. I don't know if you want to state your name for the record.
My name is Pedro Torres.
Pedro Torres. Well, thank you so much for coming tonight. Uh I seen that uh Chief Roski stepped out for a second. Uh but if uh I I guess I got one question, uh city manager Dave Zabel, do they, do they still have that uh an office downtown? They don't have that anymore? Uh so is it, you have any comments you can maybe share where he?
Well, I I am aware that uh we had a couple of officers visit you today.
Uh I had an officer give me a call today, and I'm meeting up with Officer Mitchell tomorrow at noon to discuss what we can colla- how we can collaborate.
So I, yeah, that I I wanted to make uh council aware of that. Uh the chief is aware of it. Uh and they're evaluating that situation. The other thing I'd want to throw out there and and the the request for additional lighting down there, I think, is is very timely, uh given the uh improvements for Lewis Street. Uh we had that discussion today too. Um and uh from a timing standpoint, you'll see, you know, Lewis, I I'm not sure if you're aware of the Lewis Street widening project that's happening from second up to fifth. And uh that would also include some improvements to the east of second on the old Lewis alignment that'll run parallel to the to the overpass as well. We're going to put in some additional parking and some things like that down there. But so there'll be additional lighting down there, but uh the chief assured me, and that's the reason he assigned the officers, is to work with you on security down there and and look at what we might be able to do. Uh if it's okay with the council, uh we'll work with the gentlemen and the other businesses owners down there. We can give you an update maybe in a month or so.
That would, that would be great. And um you know, I don't know if you said you heard or if it was a rumor about shipping people in for?
This is a quote from an officer that was there during the break, and that happened a couple of weeks ago to my neighbor's business.
Okay, because I haven't heard of anything like that, you know, as of, I haven't heard personally of anything like that, but I hope that's not the case. But uh uh as you can see, I know the city manager is willing and uh and Chief Roski to have officers work and appreciate your passion to help. Uh there's nothing more, and is, I I hope you know that this council has been adamant about working with downtown folks. And since my time here, and since the new council has come over four years ago, we've been, we're trying real hard to finally get things going. And and as you can see, things are starting to move. Uh but we'll do our best to to make sure that we keep it safe and and we do whatever we can to improve our downtown Pasco.
Thank you, Mister Mayor Martinez. Um I do want to note, I also spoke with Mike Gonzalez, uh who's working with the downtown um management authority. And uh I want to let you know that we're also collaborating together. So if there's anything we can do, please reach out and let us know what we can do as citizens to help out those of you who are taking charge of our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Anybody else? Okay. Okay, one last call. If not, then we'll go ahead and uh and move right along to the next item on our agenda, and that is uh reports from committees and or officers. Uh any council members like to have to report anything for the week? Yes, Councilmember Serrano?
Yeah, thank you, Mister Mayor. Uh and thank you to city staff for an excellent Veterans Day um celebration memorial event. Um I I always look forward to what we're doing, and we always have something new, uh at least over the past several events of both Veterans Day and Memorial Day. And uh Mister DOTA gave me kind of the the view of the future that for Memorial Day, we'll be doing some additions, I believe, to the cemetery. So again, it's a, it was a great event. So Mister Rakai, Mister DOTA and team, thank you very much. Um it's it's always just just great to recognize those individuals who have served our country and continue to serve our country. It's a great program as always. So thank you.
And thank you for um your participation in Veterans Day at the cemetery. Appreciate your your help there, Councilmember Serrano. Anybody else? Uh I'll just mention real quickly, uh uh Mayor Protem Barajas and I attended a meeting that we'll go over just a little bit later here in the in the meeting. So um it was a, it was a subcommittee for the B D I, and we'll go over those details here just shortly. So if there's nobody else, we'll move along to the first item. Uh excuse me, it's a it should be item seven B, the American Rescue Plan Act Projects List Update. So city manager Dave Zabel, would you like to introduce that?
I I think actually Director Sigdahl is going to get us updated on that.
All right.
Thank you, Mister Zabel, and um thank you, Mister Mayor, and evening council. Um we um as a group have been uh discussing this um allocation, which is seventeen point four million dollars. We've received half of that allocation and expecting to receive uh the remainder sometime next year. We're not sure exactly when, but uh my best uh estimate is uh sometime during March of two thousand twenty-two. Uh over uh the last five, six months, uh since we've known of our allocation, uh council um has directed staff to prepare a list with all of the ideas that we've discussed during a workshop meeting. And uh some of those things we've already funded, uh like on this slide for utility assistance. Uh uh council has allocated almost one point five million and uh or one point one million, a little bit more in fact, for uh various utility services like water, sewer, stormwater, ambulance, electric, uh garbage, things like that. And um I'm very happy to uh report that almost all of this funding is already distributed. Uh there's maybe um maybe twenty or thirty thousand dollars left or or maybe a little bit more, but it's definitely less than a hundred thousand dollars that is uh remaining to be distributed to our residents. With business assistance, we've been also working really hard on this program. We partnered with uh Ch- uh Pasco Chamber of Commerce, and they've been working with all of the applicants. Um just as a caveat to this assistance, we we um pulled up the uh uh put up the program very quickly. Uh and we tried to work with uh documentation that was most easily available. And so that it is easier for our businesses to provide that information uh and that we can help the people who need it the most uh as quickly as possible. Uh with um so far, um we have allocated more than one point six, almost one point seven million dollars uh to uh various uh Pasco businesses. Uh and then a little bit more um to Pasco Chamber of Commerce for their um administration of the program itself. We've also hired a community resource specialist that we just discussed during our budget discussion. Um and of course, we're having ongoing discussion on life safety program. We um without really going into the details of it and looking at the report from the engineer who's working on um analysis of um of the uh downtown businesses currently, uh we're estimating seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars as a placeholder, but we're not quite sure where that number might lie and come back to council with uh with a better estimate at a later date. Next slide, please. And then there are some outstanding projects that are um that we've discussed, uh but I I believe we need to discuss it a little bit more. Um water uh capital projects, the nine million dollars that uh staff presented during the water sewer rate study. This nine million dollars would essentially go to reduce um the amount um or the rate uh for um our uh utility ratepayers uh by two point five percent, excuse me, two percent each year for three years. Uh we also have mobile outreach professional um program and the community health program. Uh, we also have mobile outreach professional, um, program and the community health program uh, that are, uh, discussions that, um, are still ongoing. And we're working with our partners, uh, in the region to ensure what type of program, what, what kind of program it would look like, how it would get funded and what are the true needs. Uh, we also have Two Rivers Behavioral Health Center that, uh, we had discussed, uh, funding with this, um, ARPA funds as well. And, um, Martin Luther King, uh, Improvement and Expansion, um, for two million dollars. Uh, also the Boys and Girls Club Building Improvements. Uh, this is something that, um, uh, we met with Boys, Boys and Girls Club, staff did a walkthrough of the facility itself. And we found that there's several improvements that could be done that would, um, significantly improve the quality of services that Boys and Girls Club can provide to uh, the children, uh, of City of Pasco. You will see those pluses there and that's basically six hundred and ninety thousand for, uh, the really improvements that we really, really could use. It's essentially a, um, a priority of sorts. But there's about one point five million dollars, uh, for that whole need if, if council chose to fund all of it. As well as, uh, incentivizing, uh, vaccinations, um, via the community vaccination clinics as well. Next slide, please. Um, there's also some other sources that we've been, uh, including in our list, but what we found over the last six, seven months is that they might be better, um, served if we find a new funding source for them. Uh, and there's various reasons for each one of them. Uh, one is our broadband service. Um, there is new funding sources that are available, uh, statewide and nationally. So we do not believe that it is, uh, critical to utilize, uh, the ARPA funds and that there might be other better sources, uh, that are being created currently for specifically, uh, broadband services. Uh, job training, uh, we contacted, uh, several agencies in the region and, um, there was really no response. Um, but there's also again, new funding sources available, uh, via, um, commerce and some other agencies as well um, for that specific purpose. Uh, generators and council equipment, we included that in the city's mid-biennium budget and basically are requesting it just from our general fund. Sometimes it is ideal not to federalize, um, the smaller projects, so that is the rationale for it. And, um, for the Small Business Development Center, we're also again, uh, discussing with our partners on, um, on what that program would look like, what would be the cost sharing. As well as the Visit Tri-Cities T-Bex, uh, the conference is postponed, so next year we could just utilize our general fund or um, some of our other funds to, um, to fund that program or that conference. Next slide, please. And overall, um, at this point, we would like to, um, have council give staff some direction on how you feel about some of the recommendations that the staff is providing at this point. But also, um, what your thoughts are on the water, funding of the water capital projects with the ARPA funds as well.
If, if I could, Mayor, so, yeah, the, the water piece is probably something that's a little more timely. In that, uh, council's gonna have to look at rates and adopt a budget based on certain assumptions. Uh, some of the other items could wait, understanding though that the water, uh, the water allocation, at least as presented, is a big chunk. And that would leave you, I think, four point one million, I think, if I'm not mistaken, uh, of remaining unallocated ARPA funds. So something to think on, but, uh, you, you don't necessarily have to make all the this, decisions on all of the proposals tonight, but, uh, the water one, it would be good to have an indication from council. Uh, what direction you might wanna go on that and at what level. And I did, I did send out a email earlier, uh, today to all council on ARPA. It was based on a series of questions I received and, uh, they provided you a little bit more information that's in the packet as well. So hopefully have the benefit of that. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager Dave Zabel and Director Recha. Uh, any questions or comments from council? Councilmember Toronto?
Thank you. Um, since you're looking for direction, uh, my perspective has not changed since most comments I made last week, which is I think the water funding should be allocated in whole. Uh, again, because that will touch every ratepayer of the city, uh, whether it's passed down through rent or passed down, you know, directly from the city through homeownership. So my perspective is that, uh, I think that one makes the most sense to show that our community as a whole, that we're going to try to find a way to help finance the future with these ARPA funds for all the residents. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Toronto. Anyone else?
Yes, Councilmember Maloney.
Yes, Councilmember Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor Martinez. Um, and this, as I alluded to earlier, is one of the items I spent a bit of time on over the, uh, the weekend trying to, trying to understand a little better. And so one of the questions I think that was, that, that I think, um, Mr. Zabel sent out in, uh, response to in the email um, in regarding to what can the ARPA be used for that could not be yet done with the general, general fund? I think that's one of the keys that we need to just make sure that we're very cognizant of tonight. We're talking about how to allocate this, this funding. Um, and that is that there are certain things that the ARPA can be used for that we cannot use, be used for, um, when we're, uh, we can't use general fund money for. So as for instance, um, one, one of the things listed was the proposed life and safety program. And remember, what we're talking about there is fire sprinkler systems in our downtown and much desired and, um, I think much heard request, uh, by this council from our downtown business owners. We couldn't use a different funding source for that, um, it seems, um, at least if I understand the, the answer in uh, staff's email to council on that. So I think that's what we need to be very cognizant of is what of our additional items that we will eventually have to choose between, um, will they be able to fit within the remaining fund with the water projects? Um, is I think, is, I think one of the, one of the key items that I've, that's, I'm certainly looking at and trying to understand. So, so that's one, one item where I think we have currently seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, um, earmarked for that. We know the need is gonna be much greater than that. We also know that we're not gonna be able to fund all of that, all, all the need. Uh, most likely, we're gonna be able to hit some high impact, um, improvements for our downtown business safety and to be able to get, uh, you know, to be able to help revitalize and, and bring people to downtown with all the improvements we're doing, make sure the businesses can support them is important. I believe that seven hundred and fifty thousand really is under what I, I, I think that we will need for that, for that program once we get more data. Um, the estimates I'm hearing for, for fire sprinkler systems is, you know, on the order of a hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand dollars for a single building. Uh, you know, of course, depending on the size. And so we're talking about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars being more like maybe four buildings, which may not make a very meaningful difference in there. So I, I do think that's something we need to make sure we have some money aside for. Not that we need to allocate it right the second, um, as Mr. Zabel said, but something we need to be keeping in mind. And I do note that we have, that we are, you know, underspending on our business assistance. So we do have, I think, more flexibility there. Sigdahl, um, well, am I correct in understanding that the, um, the estimate of what we would have after using the money for the water, um, projects? That, that there would be, um, that that money assumes that we are spending three million dollars on business assistance? Is that accurate?
Uh, that is what has been allocated by the council so far. Um, but at this point, we are a little bit less than uh, two million dollars in terms of total spend.
Great. So, so we have about a million dollars there that we need to understand what the highest priority is for that as well. So that's more money available that we still have a future decision to make on as well. And I know I'm getting a bit into the weeds on some of these things, so, um, but I, I just, just when we're looking through this, I wanna be very thoughtful. This, this sort of um, allocation from the federal government with, um, such broad use, um, probably will not happen again in my lifetime. And so I want to be very sure that we're, we're doing the best use of this we can. And while obviously the water projects do benefit everyone, that is also something that can be partially funded out of, you know, general fund dollars and other things. Whereas we, um, you know, with this ARPA funding, there is uses that perhaps we could, we, we, we wouldn't be able to apply anything else to. So I think that's something that we need to be considering as we're, we're allocating our, our funding here. So with all that being said, as I'm looking through this, um, I believe that I could support the, the proposal from staff um, for the nine million dollars. Um, I think that we have sufficient money still remaining to be allocated that the items that are of prior, both of, of high priority and are maybe limited to only being able to use out of ARPA. I think we have enough m- money still remaining to be able to fund those projects. So, um, after, uh, probably, gosh, I don't know, maybe fifteen hours of work over the last week trying to figure this out. I think that's the conclusion I ultimately came to, that I could support that. So anyways, um, lots of other questions. I provided a lot to, to, to staff and I think, um, count, my fellow council members saw the results of some of those. Um, I think that's where I, where I've ended up on that. So future conversations about what exactly wanna do, how to support the mental health services, et cetera, but um, for tonight, I think that's where, I think that's my, my, my suggestion to staff and, uh, my, my stance for council. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney.
Mr. Mayor, if, if I could add, um, there are things that ARPA funds can be utilized where our general fund might not be. Uh, however, um, I think there is, uh, a confusion with the ARPA funds because the bill itself that was passed by Congress was quite, uh, wide in its application. And so, um, we have, we read that bill and we realize that it applies, it has a really broad application to almost every facet of American life. However, uh, there is a chunk, uh, that is specific to local governments and states. Um, and, um, and I want to read the statement to you that it reads really broad and then it narrows it down, which makes it really difficult for people like me to really give a clear answer sometimes. So I would just like to read from this document that is dog-eared and, you know, quite old already. It says, while the economic impacts may either be delayed or immediate, assistance or aid to individuals or businesses that did not experience a negative economic impact from the public health emergency would not be an eligible use under this category. And so what this ba- basically means, or as I read it, is that at first, whenever we walk into utilization of ARPA funds, um, when we're giving it to a business or an individual, uh, not government services like the True, True Rivers Behavioral Health, but more of business assistance or even utility assistance is that, that's, that's the litmus test. Has this business or individual been affected by, uh, COVID? And you have to show that there's a negative economic impact. And so after that, it's, it's wide open in, in many cases in terms of how you can use that, but uh, that is the first step to it. Um, so after that first step is crossed, then you, you can utilize it for various options that maybe our general fund might not be able to do so. I, I just want to clarify that. Um, as I know that the bigger bill, um, is, is quite uh, wide in its applications, but we do have more restricted rules around the specific part within that bill.
Thank you, Director Recha. And you know, uh, Councilmember Toronto hit a lot of the points that I wanted to share, so I won't repeat them, but, uh, but also I, I am very much in favor of, uh, a- as you're asking for a direction to also use for the water projects, cause it does, I mean, that's a, that's almost a no-brainer for me. Cause it'll impact everybody and, uh, everybody was affected. Uh, but I also, I, I, from what I'm hearing is that I am enlightened that, uh, whatever is remaining and whatever we can use to help uh, in those other programs that we would actually utilize those. And I would, I would, and I know the staff has been trying very hard and you've been trying very hard and I appreciate that very much. Uh, but continue that effort to try to utilize those to help those in, in those areas that that, uh, would benefit for, for those people, for our safety in, in downtown area. So that, that would be where my comment would be. Anybody else? Okay, if not, then thank you very much, Director Recha. Uh, hopefully, I mean, I, I, I think you have enough direction now.
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, then we'll move on to the next item. And next we have, um, number eight hearings and council actions on ordinances and resolution relating there too. And the first one is, um, an ordinance, a two thousand twenty-two Advilorum Tax Levy and General Fund Revenue, uh, Review. And Director Recha, I know we've discussed this a little bit, but go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You might as well call it the Finance Day today at the council chambers. So council, uh, we, we went through the property tax levy and general fund review in detail. Um, and today would be the public hearing and, um, approval of the resolution for um, for an action on the property tax levy. Next slide, please. And, um, Advilorum, uh, which is, uh, again, a property tax, uh, essentially Washington State limits its property tax to one percent. So, um, this is not just from the prior year. So as I mentioned last week, and this is for the benefit of the viewers as well, um, is that we're not allowed to increase the property tax from the prior year, uh, by more than one percent. So any entity were limited to one percent. And that is why for City of Pasco, uh, which has gone through so much growth in the last couple of dec- decades, um, we, you will see the assessed valuation go up. But our numerator, which is, uh, our rate collected does not go up. And so we, um, that is why you see the rate decrease. Uh, because something has to come down for that, uh, for that total property tax to not go up by one percent. And I, I believe that sometimes we get the postcard from our assessor's office and I've talked to our Franklin County Assessor's office here, and you see it, your, your, uh, value of your home go up. And so immediately you think your, your property taxes are going up with that same increment. And it is not because as council can see, especially in the last five years since I've been here, our property taxes have gone down every single year. And so it is more of a pie and how much that pie can increase. So if, everything being equal, if there was no single home or commercial property that was built in the City of Pasco, the council can only increase its property tax revenue by one percent. Uh, what is really beneficial to the City of Pasco is that we have a lot of new construction. And so our property tax, the revenue that we bring in does go by one percent, but it's only because we're building these new things that are not within that one percent limit. Next slide, please. And as you can see, the valuation trend, uh, since two thousand, uh, we have, um, gone up by seven times our assessed valuation. Um, not a surprise for, uh, people who have lived in Pasco for a long time and how the city has grown. Next slide, please. And the bank capacity, this is a really difficult concept, uh, sometimes, uh, for myself to wrap my brain around. Uh, but essentially, uh, you're banking your capacity. You're saying, we want to keep the money into our residents' pockets and when we need it, we will increase the property taxes like we did in two thousand nineteen uh, at a rate that is higher than, uh, the one percent because we banked all of our one percents, you know, over the years. And so that is, that is all that it is. Uh, council, of course, last week, uh, or a couple of weeks ago, gave us the direction uh, that you would like to bank the capacity for this year again. I do want to state that your, um, your ordinance or, um, y- your ordinance will say property tax increase of. Um, and that is a little bit confusing given that you are choosing not to increase. However, we say an increase of zero percent. And that is a legal language that is required because when you say the increase of zero percent, you're essentially banking that capacity. So I just want to put you at ease if you have read that language and it has confused you. Uh, but that is something that our legal has reviewed and that is the purpose of that language. Next slide, please. Um, and of course, this sheet, uh, we came to you with option A or option B. Uh, the only difference between option A and option B is that uh, one hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine dollars, which is that one percent increase from prior year's property taxes to this year's property taxes. Uh, uh, council will also see, um, the new construction increase, which is the three hundred and fifty thousand, as well as some estimate on, um, the state utility, um, increase in state utility as well. Um, so with, with your option A, which is essentially that you're banking that one hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine dollars, um, and you are, uh, reducing the tax rate, levy rate, uh, to one point four eight three per thousand assessed value. So you're incre- you're reducing the rate by point zero two, or, sorry, zero point two zero one. So you're increasing, you're reducing the rate by .02, sorry, 0.201. So the rate is going down as it has in the last five years. The only one year that the rate went up was when council chose to take the bank capacity and build some of the fire stations and the animal control shelter, things like that. Next slide, please. And again, some comparisons that we went through last year, or last couple of weeks, it feels like a year. And just a cost of having a home in Kenwick and Richland and Pasco, and again, for our viewers at home, this might feel quite cheap and not quite commensurate of the property taxes that they pay. This is just the city's portion of it. Next slide, please. So overall, my apologies, this is an old one that I did not edit, but essentially, banking the 1% increase to the prior property tax, it includes construction values, and then preliminary rate of 1.483, which is a decrease from 1.684 per thousand assessed valuation. Next slide, please. With that, that's kind of the end of the property tax, and given it's a public hearing or it'll be a public hearing as well, this is just a general fund overview that we are doing really well. As we've talked about sales taxes, we're doing really well with property taxes, just because of all of the new construction. Our economic base growth is leading us to 6% to 8% increase each year in sales tax, which is extremely healthy. And we've also done some grants, applied for some grants for some of our police and fire positions, and that has saved us some money for, in terms of wages and benefits as well. So that has helped us a lot. And we're also doing cost of service, like the cost allocation that we discussed, to ensure that all of the work that general fund is funding and the other funds are receiving benefits from, that they are, that they pay the general fund in a proper manner. So we ensure that we do our cost allocation. Every three years, we update the model itself every year, but then we do a whole overview and rebuilding of the model every three years. And we anticipate this increase in residential, industrial, and commercial, all of these areas, and that will really help our revenue base overall. Next slide, please. And we talked about where the property taxes go, and of course, we, in the past, we just kind of talked about just our property taxes, but there's other property taxes that our residents pay as well. So 36% of that property tax goes to school district, 32 goes to the state, city gets 17%, so the rate that we were discussing is that 17%. And then county gets 11%, and then there's some other agencies like Port of Pasco, Mosquito District, and mental health, things like that, for other 4%. Next slide, please. Sales tax rates again, it's always a surprise, so I like to talk about this at least two times a year. For any person in City of Pasco who's spending $100, they're paying $8.60 in sales tax. And the city does not get all of that money. A large portion of that, 6.5%, goes to state, and then the city gets 0.85% of that amount, of that regular tax. And then we also get some portion of the public safety and the criminal justice tax as well. Next slide, please. And then, this is a pretty standard sales tax chart. We get a large portion of our sales taxes from retail, and then construction, so construction retail taxes, as well as some of the wholesale trade accommodations. And this goes into further details as well, as in which categories within the retail or construction, but this is kind of the higher level category. Next slide, please. So overall, as we talked about last year, last couple of weeks ago, we are a city with operations that are getting more complex, and as Mayor mentioned, we're bursting at the seams, so that is a challenge. But we're also a growing city with a really healthy revenue base that can be relied upon for many years to come. And of course, we have improvements and replacements of city's existing infrastructure. That will be a lot of pressure to general fund and some of the other funds as well. Definitely the conversation that we've been having regarding our capital improvement plan as well. With that, I'm open to any questions you might have.
Thank you, Director Rija. So I will now ask council if they have any questions or comments for staff before I open a hearing or conduct a hearing, a public meeting. And I would just like to say real quickly that in the thirteen years I've been on the council, when I first come on the council, there wasn't, or it was just less, I will say it was less balanced, that we didn't have, we had more residential compared to our commercial, wasn't balanced as it is now. And it is just awesome to see over the years, because I've always struggled, and I said, "Why are things going up? Why didn't things keep going up before growing?" Because we've been growing ever since I've been here. But with all the commercial and developments and all the things that are happening, these are the reasons why where growth is good. One is because I'll always say, "If you're not growing, you're dying." So we're growing exponentially here in Pasco, and these are one of the benefits right here, that we can be efficient and keep our taxes down. And I think, I would just like to reiterate the importance of everybody knowing how much actual property taxes go to the city. It's a pretty low number, I think, and I think that the city is doing a wonderful job managing that and working with that, the 17% that goes from property taxes and of course, all the sales tax and things of that nature. So I just wanted to throw that in there, but if there's no other question or comments, I will open up, I will open up for a public hearing for comments from the audience. So would anybody have anything, if they would like to speak on this topic at this Hearing done, I'll have a second call and a third call. Okay, if not, I'll close the hearing. And with that, I would entertain a motion.
Absolutely, Mayor. I move to adopt ordinance number 4558, providing for an increase in the regular property taxes of the city for levy in 2021 year, preserving levy capacity for future years, and providing for related matters and further authorized publication by summary only.
So there's a motion to adopt ordinance number 4558. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Toronto. So all those in favor of adopting ordinance number 4558, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Oppose, say nay? And it passes unanimously. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to a public meeting and resolution accepting a notice of Thanksgiving Partnership intent to commence annexation proceedings. Director Rick White, would you like to entertain us?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item, this resolution involves a proposed annexation for a little more than 80 acres that's located on the east side of Capitol Avenue and almost directly east of the research's new facility site. Annexations, as I've mentioned before, are a very tedious and lengthy process through state law. Council's approval of this resolution tonight will accept the annexation as proposed, which fixes the boundaries. It will assign the assumption of indebtedness for the proposed annexation, and eventually, through the city's hearing examiner process, we will bring back a petition for annexation, which will also assign zoning. And be happy to answer any questions on this process, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Director White. So I will ask council if they have any questions or comments for staff before I open the public Hearing done, I'll open this hearing. Does anyone else wish to speak on this item? And I'll have a second call for anyone else that would like to speak on this item. Third call. So I'll close the public record hearing. And with that, I would entertain a motion.
Absolutely, Mayor. I move the City Council approved Resolution number 4120, accepting a notice of intent to commence annexation proceedings for the Thanksgiving Partnership Annexation, providing a determination on the boundary to be annexed and whether simultaneous zoning and the assumption of the bonded indebtedness will be required.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Barajas. So there's a motion for the City Council to approve Resolution number 4120. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it again.
There you go. Seconded by Councilmember Toronto. Thank you, Mr. Toronto. So with that, all those in favor for approving Resolution number 4120, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Oppose, say nay? It passes unanimously. Thank you. Next, we're going to go to a resolution, well, actually, we're going to go to the next item on the agenda, which is ordinances and resolutions not relating to hearings. And the first one is a resolution from Basin Disposal Inc., 2022, proposed rate increase. Mr. Worley, want to share what we shared, what happened the other night?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This item is coming back before you tonight for approval, if it's council's desire. As council may recall from last week, this item was discussed, and the council recommended that a subcommittee of the council meet with BDI and kind of go over the details of it. And so two of our subcommittee members are with us here this evening and sitting upon the dais. And we had a very exciting meeting. BDI staff went through a presentation and gave a lot of information that we identified in the presentation last week. They clarified that the CPI index, which is used to help look at the increase in rates, that is a mechanism to preserve revenue's current buying power. The CPI is not a raise in profit margin. And just for clarification, they commented that the last time that we have seen inflation over 4% was during the recession back in 2008. So it's been quite a while since that CPI index has been that high. And so the proposal before the council tonight is to look at the new rates that would become effective January 1st in 2022. The overall weighted average of the rate change is about 4.11%, which is based on two components. One is the service component, which is based on the CPI, and that's a 4.8% increase. And then there is the disposal component, or the disposal fees, and that is a 2.75% increase. So combined, they average about 4.11%. One of, a couple of things that we discussed at the meeting that we thought it would be important to mention also is that the BDI has a senior low-income discount program. And so there is, there are people that can apply for, and if they qualify, they can get a significant discount on the rates that they use for the garbage pickup and disposal. And so encourage people who might want to look into that to contact BDI for more information. And then the other item is to remind all of our customers that there are two free dump coupons per year as part of your service. So feel free to reach out to BDI to get those coupons mailed to you, so you can take advantage of that offer. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Worley.
Or if our subcommittee members would like to add to this information tonight.
Well, before, sure, let me, Councilmember Toronto, being that Mayor Protem and I were on the subcommittee, I would just like to just share that, you know, there's other charges that are incurred in the disposal costs that, again, BDI is not, is not charging extra for any of that. I think it's pretty obvious in our climate today, where we're at, and you know, how everything's rising in price, and basically, they're just adjusting for those increases. But the bottom line for the regular garbage can that's within the City of Pasco, the garbage that he picks up on a weekly basis, the bottom line is 92 cents a month. That's what the increase is. And I couldn't see anywhere where that wasn't a fair increase due to the inflation and the rising cost of everything that they have to deal with. BDI has always been a collaborator for the City of Pasco and always gives back to the city. I just, I just felt like, you know, this is actually necessary, and it was good to have explained why these increases are coming. And also, we just evaluated many other things, such as the potential for, you know, evaluating routes to see how, see if there's a possibility that there could be money saved in those areas. And BDI is doing everything they can to make sure that they're giving the Pasco community the best rates possible for their services. So I wanted to share that before we went into the next item. So with that, Councilmember Toronto?
I just wanted to understand that program. Was it you had to qualify as a senior or low income, or you had to be senior and low income? I didn't quite catch that. Just to understand who it's available to.
Director Worley, if I can just pitch in on that one?
That would be great.
Ms. Farzick did mention that. So for senior citizens that are on a tight budget can apply for assistance, a subsidy. Also, they do offer smaller-sized canisters, because obviously, they generate less garbage. Did I miss anything else?
Nope, that's it.
The only other thing that I would add is that wasn't mentioned was, on those two free days a year that you could go and dump stuff from your houses, there is a weight limit on that. It's not, you know, unlimited. But, and I don't remember if it was 500 or 1,000 pounds, I don't quite remember that. But there is a limit on weight, just so you know, but I think it's imperative that all the community members take advantage of those two days a year. You can clean up, maybe spring or fall. Would encourage that, to take advantage of the price you're paying on a monthly basis for your BDI services. So with that, any other questions or comments? If not, then I would entertain a motion.
Absolutely, Mayor. I move to approve Resolution number 4121, approving the rate increase for solid waste collections and disposal services by Basin Disposal Incorporated.
So there's been a motion to approve Resolution number 4121. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it again.
Seconded by Councilmember Toronto. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Oppose, same sign? Or oppose, say nay, please? It passes unanimously. And before I go on to the next subject, I'd like to just thank once again Mr. Dietrich and his staff for all the work they do for the City of Pasco. Thank you for that. Next, we'll go to the next item, and that's a resolution approving the 2022-2025 Collective Bargaining Agreement with IOUE Local Number 280. And I have Colleen Chapman, Human Resources Director, or yes, I'm sorry, City Manager Dave Zabel, go ahead.
Thank you. And Director Chapin will be here if we have any additional technical questions. So just walking through this, this is a four-year agreement. The current collective bargaining agreement between the city and International Union of Operating Engineers, Local 280, expires the end of this year. IOUE represents most of our skilled operations workers and public works and administrative and community services departments. And these are basically the staff that maintain our parks and grounds, our streets, water, sewer, stormwater, marina, and our boat launch, boat launches, boulevards. They treat our drinking water, treat our sewage before it's discharged into Columbia, maintain our buildings, and pretty much everything in between. So they're, they cover a lot of ground for the city and the residents of Pasco. IOUE is a 77-member bargaining unit and desire good relations with the city, as the city does with them, stability, certainty. And as a result, the city and union commenced negotiations on a successor agreement last summer with a goal of not letting this agreement expire and being up, being without contract for any part of next year. Those negotiations went well, numerous minor contract language modifications, mostly to, for clarity for management and bargaining unit members. clar- for clarity for management and bargaining unit members uh and cleaning up some language. Uh, we reached tentative agreement back in September and uh over the next few weeks, the the union membership ratified the agreement and advised us in early October of that. Uh, the economic highlights of the proposed agreement uh are are pretty basic. Uh, you know, recall that uh June to June CPI for twenty-one over twenty uh was on the order of six percent. So CPI is generally the the benchmark uh we use uh in negotiations. Uh, twenty twenty-two uh proposed increase is four percent flat. And then in twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four and twenty-five, we get back on a CPI type of um uh increase measurement with a floor and a cap. So a floor means if CPI is two point nine percent, they're still gonna get through you. A cap is if CPI is six percent, you're gonna get a maximum four. So uh for twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, the floor is three, the cap is four percent. And in twenty twenty-five, we're back to probably a little bit more normal uh of a floor and cap than which what council is used to seeing. I think we're just in this high inflation mode. Really hard to convince the union it's a great idea to lower the floor. You know, so and 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 hard to convince management that it's a great idea to raise the cap, but so there there's some adjustments that were made there. And hopefully back to normal in twenty twenty-five. Uh, not a not a significant impact, but I would note, um, you know, we had some events occur over the year. Uh, one of the negotiated items that came out of this uh uh small amount of an increase in terms of cost, but a large amount of a benefit uh for life insurance uh from fifteen thousand uh in the event of a death to fifty thousand. And I think that was very well received by the by the membership. Staff recommends the approval of the collective bargaining agreement as negotiated and ratified by the union.
Thank you, City Manager Dave Zabel. Uh, any questions or comments for Dave Zabel? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Absolutely, Mayor. I move to approve Resolution number four one two two, approving the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-five collective bargaining agreement with the International Union of Operating Engineers Local number two eighty and further authorize the city manager to execute the agreement.
So there's been a motion to approve Resolution number four one two two. Do I hear a second? I'm sorry, who's this? Oh, Councilmember Melony. Councilmember Melony. So all those, all those in favor to approve Resolution number four one two two, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay? It passes unanimously. Thank you. And thank you for that uh, City Manager Dave Zabel. I know it's a lot of work and we wanna, you know, be fair and and take care of uh our bargaining folks as well. So thank you for that.
Yeah, we have a great uh, we're a great negotiation team, uh deputy city managers on that, as well as our chief negotiator. Uh, Colleen Chapin. And then in this particular case, we had uh our uh Deputy Public Works Director also involved, John Meehan, so.
Perfect, thank you.
Yep.
All right, next. Uh, we will go to a resolution to accept the acceptance of work for Fire Station number eighty-four and Fire Headquarters. And we have with us today our special guest of honor. Who we haven't heard from in a while, but Chief Bob Gier, how you doing?
I'm doing well, thank you. I I think we're gonna start with uh, this isn't ask the council to approve the uh uh work done at Fire Station eighty-four by Jackson Contractor Group. I think we have a floor plan to show first, Zach. Do you have that? And I moved up here just so I could get lost on the mouse. And where where is it here? No, I can't find it. Oh, there we go. So uh council, basically, uh just to give you a little overview of the station. This area that you see right here, that's that's kinda shaded out, you don't see any walls or anything, is the floor plan of the current Fire Station eighty-three. And one of the things that was important was to try and replicate that living area. Um, you know, it's kinda like if you're sleeping in a hotel room and you get up to use the restroom in the middle of the night, you can't remember whether you turned left or right. It's the same when you move from fire station to station and come in and work your shift and go home and back and forth. So we're we're making a real effort and and in the design of the new Fire Station eighty-five, we're we're gonna follow a very similar uh footprint. The outside will probably look different on that station because it'll be in a more residential area, but the interior will lay out the same. So again, you have the um this darkened in area, this is the current uh living area, fire, working part of the fire station. And then what we did, what we did is we wrapped the administrative offices and the battalion chief's living area uh and a multi- a lobby and a multipurpose room around that existing footprint. Uh, and have some separations, but we still kinda live together again and and that's nice to get back together, especially uh we've been multiple years without uh being in the same building with the battalion chief, the shift commander. And it's good to get back with them and and kinda keep that, cause they're kinda the go-between between management and labor uh on the street, so. Uh, with that, we have a virtual walkthrough that um will show. Now, we are gonna plan a open house as soon as our numbers get below two hundred, which we're pretty close to being there, so we hope in the next few weeks, two things. The numbers go down and some of our furniture shows up, um which are the two things that we're that we're kinda working on before we do the open house.
Bottom of the ocean.
Pardon me?
Hopefully, the furniture is not at the bottom of the ocean.
Yeah, so we did a, uh, actually, the architectural firm did this little virtual walkthrough and we used this when we were trying to pick colors of walls and stuff. So I thought this would be a good way to kinda show you what the inside looks like, so if you can make that work, Zach. So that's sort of an overview. That last garage is not the fire chief's parking garage like John Funfar accuses me of. That's the battalion chief's bay uh separate from the rest of the apparatus bays. Uh, so you kinda took a walk through, came into the lobby, we're waiting, the union is finishing up work on on our nineteen thirty-two, I think I'm trying to remember the year. Uh, fire engine that we still have here from Pasco that'll go in this lobby area. Um, you saw the offices, uh you saw some of the living area, you came down, came through the multipurpose room and then went into the kitchen in the station. And and the admin shares the kitchen, that's why there's four refrigerators, um one for each shift plus one for admin staff. Um, we share the kitchen with the with the on-duty crews. And then you went out into the bays here, went through the airlock, that's designed to keep the the dirty part of the station outside of the of the clean part of the station. Keep the exhaust fumes and all that kinda stuff in here and not in the living area. So uh with that, if there's any questions, I'm glad to answer those.
Thank, thank you, Chief Gier. Thank you for this presentation. It was uh pretty nice to see that virtual presentation. Any questions or comments from council?
Yeah, this is Councilmember Melony.
Yes, Councilmember Melony.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Martinez. Uh, thank you, Chief, for the for the presentation. I I just wanted to um ask a little more detailed question about one of the last points you made, which was about, you know, keeping our our firefighters safe from the various fumes, exhaust and particulate that are, you know, generated by, you know, their job. Um, what other sort of features do we have in place? I know we were trying to modernize a lot of our safety features uh to make sure that we can, you know, keep down the incidences of cancer that we're seeing, you know, as prevalent and unfortunately in our 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 many server fire departments. So could you, could you speak a little bit to that?
Sure. Um, we really have a couple of things that that we're trying to deal with that we're seeing a much higher incidence in firefighters than the general population. And that's uh certain cancers and uh cardiovascular. Um, so this is, this fire station has a lot of um protection from the carcinogens that may uh be out in the apparatus floor. Uh, and then again, uh when they come back from a fire down in this area, they have a decontamination room and a laundry where their turnouts go in and then they can go get their second set of turnouts and put clean turnouts back on, so they're not wearing turnout clothing that's already contaminated from a building fire. Um, and again, the airlocks provide that air separation to keep uh exhaust fumes um particularly out of the the living area of the station. The other thing that we do in terms of heart healthy is um a more modern internet protocol-based alerting system that ramps up from kind of a quiet tone to a little bit louder, comes on with red lights instead of bright white lights and wakes them up. Um, the guys tell me that they feel it wakes them up just as quickly, but they don't feel like they go from a heart rate of fifty or sixty to a heart rate of a hundred and twenty instantly with bright lights coming on and loud noise. So we've incorporated heart healthy uh along with the uh cancer prevention through the lip reduction in carcinogens. And then a a good emphasis on a workout area and and the right equipment in there. We have a peer fitness group that is pretty active in terms of keeping people on some sort of um workout uh schedule. And and when you tour the station, you'll see there's a nice large workout room that opens out to the patio through a bay door. Um, and so all of those are designed to keep those people um in what we call healthy in and healthy out. And and that's really the goal, healthy end of the job and healthy out when you retire. Does that answer your question, sir?
Yes, Steve, thank you very much. I just, it's really important, I think, to emphasize how we're we're we're, we are modernizing. And that's one of the key elements that we're doing is as part of the modernization is to protect the the people who's who serve our community through the fire department. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Melony, and I couldn't say it enough. Uh, you know, it it is a very expensive building, but the people who put their lives on the line for us every day uh to protect us and and help us, um, it's the least we could do. So uh anyway, I've I've very impressed with the details. And I would encourage everybody to show up to the uh open house uh when when or if it happens. And um it it really is pretty exciting to go in to see uh all the details of uh the engineering that's that's involved. Um, such as, I'll just say a quick example real quick on, yeah, you know, the alarms to wake them up in the middle of the night. Uh, how does that work real quickly, Chief Gier?
How does it work?
Well, I mean, I mean, isn't there like an audible to?
Yeah, there's an audible alarm. It comes off with a little tone that starts off quieter. Uh, oh, I don't wanna stand here and sound stupid and go woo, but it's kinda what it does. So, yeah, I'll look stupid and do that. Um, I do a better air horn, I think, than I do that tone, but anyway, um and it, but it ramps up and 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 the lights come on with red lights instead of white lights. And and it's that ramp-up tone that keeps them from going, like I said, from a sixty heart rate to a hundred and twenty. And that, you know, when I started, there was a klaxon on the wall. I mean, it was a loud, it was like the submarine diving klaxon on the wall in the bunk room. And the lights all came on white and boy, you flew out of bed. Um, and that's what we're trying to avoid now is to
Sure.
is to uh wake them up quickly, but more gently.
Yeah, and I just wanted to emphasize on the uh the level of detail that this place has for our firefighters. So with that, um, if there's no other question or comments, I would entertain a motion, please.
Absolutely, Mayor. I move to approve Resolution number four one two three, accepting the work performed by Jackson, Jackson Contractor Group Incorporated under contract for the city of Pasco's new Fire Station number eighty-four and Fire Administration Headquarters.
So there's been a motion to approve Resolution number four one two three. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilmember Serrano. All those in favor to approve Resolution number four one two three, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Oppose, say nay? It passes unanimously. And we just got, uh, let's see, one, one last one before we go into executive session. So we uh we got a a resolution set in a public meeting for the Port of Pasco Ryman Industrial Center annexation. Director White, would you like to kick us off with that?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. This uh item involves, he proposes annexation of about three hundred acres. It's located uh generally east of uh three ninety-five, or excuse me, we- west of three ninety-five and east of railroad avenues. And uh the uh, this might look familiar to uh council, the Port of Pasco did a presentation just last workshop on tax increment financing and the focus, of course, on that tax increment financing program will be this annexation site as it will house the Dairy Gold Milk Processing Facility. So very much like the uh annexation item for the Thanksgiving partnership. Uh, approval will set the public hearing date for December sixth, so the boundaries can be determined. The uh assignment of indebtedness can be decided and eventual assignment of zoning for this uh proposed annexation.
Thank you, Director White. Yes, and um so with that, any questions and comments from council? So I'd entertain a motion.
Absolutely, Mayor. I move to approve Resolution number four one two four. Setting seven PM, December sixth, two thousand twenty-one as a time and date for a public meeting to consider the Port of Pasco notice of intent to commence annexation proceedings for the Ryman Industrial Center annexation.
Thank you. So there's a motion to approve Resolution number four one two four. Do I hear a second?
I will second that one.
Seconded by Councilmember Serrano. So all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Oppose, say nay? It passes unanimously. Wow. So now we go to unfinished business. Uh, City Manager Dave Zabel, do you have anything you'd like to share?
I I only had one item tonight, Mayor, and we we'd gotten a question from one of the council about uh cold weather sheltering as as we're going into the uh winter months and I'm gonna ask Chief Gier if uh he wouldn't mind sharing what our protocols are and our partners.
Sure, uh, Mayor, council and Mr. Zabel. The uh, the cold weather situation is very similar to what we run into with the with the high heat that we had last summer. Uh, and we certainly know that we have a a percentage of our at-risk population that that is subject to that uh, to those conditions. Um, in some respects, although some people may disagree with me, but in some respects, we're very fortunate to have the Union Gospel Mission here because they have a fairly high capacity, um overflow capacity. Typically, they they'll be housing around fifty to sixty people a night. Um, but they have a total overflow capacity of about a hundred and seventy people uh that can go into that mission if we need to. So really, we we meet with them in the summer and we meet with them again in the fall uh and make sure that they're they're able to take those extra people. If we go on a call and find someone that that really doesn't need to go to the hospital, that needs to get inside, we can take them over to the mission and they'll and they'll accommodate those people for the night. Um, so that that, it's fortunate that we do have that capability or that that capacity downtown uh which is where we would obviously run into most of the homeless individuals that we deal with. And that's what we rely on both for heat uh and for cold weather.
Thank you, Chief Gier. That's it? All right. Well, thank you very much. Uh, next, we'll go to new business, and there's none listed, and miscellaneous discussion. The only thing I would just like to ask in miscellaneous discussion, Chief Bob Gier, do we still uh you still have a program where for elderly, uh for seniors, uh they could just call the fire department and uh replace batteries in your smoke detectors, correct?
We sure do, and and we're out doing them every day, especially this time of year. It seems to be the everyone remembers, it's October and change your clock and change your smoke detector battery, and we have crews going out every day. Uh, we are running into a lot of smoke detectors that are hitting their ten-year life uh which is really kinda coincides with the real growth spurt that the city had, starting, you know, twelve, fifteen years ago. And and we are finding that we're needing to replace a lot of those smoke detectors. And we have the ability to replace those um with battery ones if that's what they require. Um, if they need wired ones, we will help them get those installed, but we usually ask that they purchase those unless they absolutely can't. Um, and then we do have funding in 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 the uh form of a grant funds we received um from the Three Rivers uh Community Health that we use in our PR end program. We've received a grant of twenty thousand dollars that that we can use for food and clothing. We can use those for low-income people that need their smoke detectors replaced, and we'll do that.
Perfect. Thank you so much for that, Chief Gier. Anybody else for a miscellaneous discussion? All right, then we'll move right into uh the next item, which is executive session. And see, uh, we will now And see, uh, we will now meet in executive session to discuss, uh, with legal counsel about current or potential litigation per R C W forty-two dot thirty dot one-ten-one-I. And we will meet for ten minutes. So it is eight-thirty and I'm gonna take a five-minute recess. Uh, so we'll be back at eight forty-five, uh, to join again and then, um, and then we can adjourn after the executive session. So thank you so much for coming tonight. For those of you who are here, Ian, have a great evening. Thank you.